This is our Ware County Commission work session for Monday, August the 26th, 24 at 3:30 PM. And I'm gonna do a roll call. Mr. Burse.
Present.
Mr. Pope.
Present.
Mr. Lucas.
Present.
Mr. Engineer. Here's you. Before we start the meeting, I'd like to ask Mr. Burse if he would lead us in prayer.
Yeah, we'll thank him. He is. Father, we thank the Lord for this day. We pray God you will bless us, oh God, as we deliberate the business of this county. Pray God you continue to bless Ware Cross and Ware County. Continue to bless this nation, oh God. And we thank you, oh God, for your son Jesus, time for our sins. We pray God you just continue to bless this nation. Continue to bless each and everyone that's represented here today in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pray to the angels to provide our United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you.
We have any guest speakers?
We didn't have anybody to sign up.
We don't have anybody on the agenda. Okay, we'll go on to the.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair. We do have Mr. Roy here on the bicentennial. The bicentennial deal.
Is that, is that at the end of the meeting? Have you got it on?
Okay.
We already got it.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, let's go on with the courthouse. The courthouse control and back box turn keep project proposals from train. And we got Chris here to explain to us.
Yes, sir.
If you would come up, Chris, if we got any questions, if the commission has any question they ask you.
Yes, sir.
You got, do y'all have any questions to him on this project?
Whenever, what's his name? Chris?
Chris Glitter.
Sir?
Chris Glider.
Mr. Glider. Mr. Glider. Whenever y'all change out these boxes like this, are you gonna change any, are you gonna have to change any ductwork or anything like that with it?
With these, we won't have to change, modify much of any ductwork. And these boxes will come with the new controls on them as well.
Are y'all gonna check them for any kind of contaminants or anything when you rip old ones out?
I.
Like mold, stuff like that, just to make sure they don't have any?
We'll do a visual inspection, and if we do see some, y'all be obviously notified immediately.
Okay.
Got it.
But, and just to clarify, no remediation, mold remediation, if it were to be found, is included in that?
I think you can pull that mic up if you want to, Chris.
Yes, sir.
I believe it will.
It won't go up no higher, because you listen?
It don't go up.
That's it.
Put it out if you wanted, that'd make it, just put it out.
Just pull it out.
Yeah, okay. Okay, yeah. Okay, Mr. Burse, I think you got it.
Yeah, yeah, appreciate you coming and, I guess, the question I have to ask, okay, now we changed all the condensing unit, I guess, I'm used to when you talk about home, so the big condensing units, right? So all of those have been changed, is that right, Scott?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, and I guess, you know, like I said, hindsight's always 20/20, but whenever y'all were doing that, I guess, was it any need to even check by this, these boxes and all that stuff at that time?
Yes, sir. We did, we did look at those. It's kind of a, you know, a whole system works together as one, right? So the air handlers feed the individual VAV boxes, variable air volume boxes, that then temper each individual space. And when we were looking at the air handlers and paired with the condensers, looked at tackling those first, because those were providing air, right? So conditioning the space as best as possible, and then looking and coming back and retrofitting the boxes and the controls as well.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess, I don't know, I'm just speaking, I guess, for myself and maybe some of the other commissioners, but, you know, we spending a lot of money on those units over there. And, you know, I guess we just wanna, as best we can, or best you can, wanna make sure that we covering everything now and not get this done, say, well, you know, by the way, you know, now we need to look at this right here, so that's what I just like, you know, if there's anything that you see, maybe that, maybe it's something else we need, okay, we need to try to go and do it all at one time.
Yes, sir, understood. So the only other portion to changing the boxes, and this is included in this proposal, is the control system. So the building automation system, these boxes will come with the brand-new symbio line of controllers. That's all controlled based off pressure. So the main air handler looks at all the boxes and sees what the pressures are, and then from there determines how to best operate the system from an air handler perspective. So that's, you got your air handlers, the control system, and then the VAV boxes. So yes, that would be all encompassing, encompassing the system.
So the air handlers, those are new, that's when you put the new, the air conditioner, so we got new air handlers, right?
Yes, sir.
And we got new condensing units.
Yes, sir.
And I've noticed in here, where you had a bug with the programming of a unit, which I think y'all got that rectified, the, the, I'd say it was a slight bug in the program of the unit, when I guess it wasn't cooling or something like that over there?
Yeah, that was back when I think it was, the air wasn't working absolutely correct, I believe. It's been a while back.
Probably the second, the last one we replaced, I call it VAV3 on the second floor.
Yep, that was.
Yeah, that, and that's partially due to that unit not being able to see these boxes, these variable air volume VAV boxes, or what we call them in our industry. Like I said, that system's controlled based off pressure, and it not being able to see each individual box's pressure, we had to modify the program to where it worked. And it's working optimally, just in a different capacity than if it could see the, each individual box.
So that's something y'all have to go back and reconfigure that too, whenever you.
Yes, sir.
Do this right here.
Yeah, and that's all included.
Okay. And also I noticed in here, I guess, some of these findings, you said that you think it might have been the plastic gears that was in the box. And I guess my next question is, I don't, I know those are kinda old and maybe kinda antiquated, so do they even have like the gears to replace them instead of?
So the style of box that's in there now is from the late 90s, early 2000s, and the design back then was actually a plunger. So think of like a ball moving in and out of a hole. So they pull the ball back, it lets more air through, and they would do that based on like a worm drive, kinda worm gears. Since then, we've gone to a much more basic style damper, it's just a butterfly damper. So it's just an actuator that moves that butterfly damper open and close. Much more simple design, you can actually replace those. No one makes that old plunger style box anymore, they stopped that in the mid 2000s when they realized it was, you know, not, not the best design. So yes, these new boxes, standard butterfly dampers, very simple, work, work great.
Okay. And also, now it's gonna be 40 of these that you're gonna be replacing, right?
Yes, sir. So there's 40 on the first floor, and then there's 23 on the second floor, and then what I call, and correct me if I'm wrong, the old jail, is what I call it, there's 12 there. Those boxes are, have already been replaced in our, a new style butterfly box, so there's no point in replacing those boxes, they're completely fine. But we will be replacing the controllers on those, so it'll integrate with the whole system.
Okay.
So yeah, 40 first floor, 23 second floor, 12 on the old jail.
I don't know if it's maybe like a, I guess, just a typo or something, but I noticed on each one of them, it states about the warranty, you know, the side giving the specs on it. But on one of them on that, I guess this B3, it didn't state anything about a warranty, anything being on that one, so it had just something that was, you know, missing, 'cause the rest of them have it.
Yes, sir. It probably type one, I can definitely fix that going forward, but yeah, they should have, all of them will have the warranty.
Okay. And since we're talking about warranty, I see it would have like a five year on the parts?
Yes, sir, five-year parts.
But only one year on the labor?
Yes, sir.
So do y'all offer like an extended warranty?
We do.
Okay.
And I can propose that as well.
Well, I was just, I was just wondering, I mean, 'cause like I said, one year, but then, you know, labor sometime run by as much as, you know, parts and stuff, so I was just wondering, you know, maybe if y'all could, since we've been such good customers of y'all, maybe could give us another year or two?
Yes, sir.
On the warranty?
I can definitely look into that.
Okay. Kinda like, you know, throw that in?
Yes, sir.
Okay. 'Cause we have been good customers, y'all.
You have been great customers. I appreciate that.
Another thing on this warranty, it's two to five year?
Yes, sir.
Will you explain that two to five year for me?
Yes, sir. So the first year is automatically covered, and then I selected the second through fifth year warranty parts.
Okay. And it's a, it's a, it's a full labor, right?
Yes, sir.
No limited, you know, warranty, but it's full?
Correct.
Okay.
On the parts, and I'm gonna go back and look at the labor side.
Scott, will this take care of the climate control problems in the Covet Fort vault?
It should. I know that, as I mentioned before, and I think Chris can tell you, it's an old building, it's not energy efficient, but with the air working properly, it should. And I don't know, Chris might be able to mention something about that himself, but.
Yes, sir, it should straighten all that out. Like I said, it's, when we replace all the rooftop units and air handlers, they all work as a whole system. And I know I keep harping on that, so apologize, but once we have full view and full control of the building, all the systems will be operating correctly. And I mean, it's not that they're not operating correctly, but it's like being able to see 50% of a system. They're operating on their own.
Right.
Just fine, and as trained, you know, engineers designed them to. You just gain efficiency and comfort cooling increases by having a full view through the building automation system of those units.
So if this system was designed to take care of the climate control in the vault, then it, everything is back where it was, and it should be fine?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and on this clarification, clarification and exclusion, this, I think, fourth bullet point, say, any piece of equipment finds to be non-operational would be handled through a separate court outside of this contract, the scope of work. So is there other thing that could be wrong in there?
No, sir. I mean, we replaced all the rooftop units, the air handlers in the space. All that's left in that system are the VAV boxes and controls. It's just that, it's in there to say like, okay, well, we wanna replace the VAV boxes, but we wanna put the old controls back on there. Train would not recommend that, and you're gonna have problems with that if we were to go that route. So that's just in there to say, if we did remove anything from this scope of work, that, you know, we're mutually agreed upon that it's not a full scope of work. And in the, the old jail portion, I believe, there is a fan and three water, domestic water heaters that would, are on the old building automation system that would be pulled in on the new building automation system.
So this just pretty much take care of everything that we need over there at courthouse?
Yes, sir. And these, I will add, these VAV boxes do have the heat strips in them, like the old boxes did, so. It's going back like for like, but with new 2024 technology.
Now, do you think that there would be any carpentry work, sheet rock work, anything else? Y'all pretty much plug and play, you take the old box out, the, the new one fits in just fine?
Yes, sir. Yep. We will have to remove ceiling grid to access the, the area.
Yeah.
And we'll work closely with Mr. Scott, whoever's, to make sure that it minimal disturbance to the court, I know that's super important. So we have to take that into consideration.
Yeah, them judges don't like their courts messed up over there.
Understood.
All right, so that's all I have, just, you know, don't forget about that warranty.
Yes, sir. I got it. Got you.
They've been good customers and, you know, you know, they won't have to use you again, and that may help, you know.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Burse, this where you need to start negotiating the price?
Well, that's. Yeah, you know, me, been right there with them, you know.
We're roughly looking at about 14,000 something per office, per box, you know, in a grand scheme of thing. I know controls and stuff gonna cost too, but to get every office, and I, I say we should know. Heat in a, heat in one office, 14,000 a month?
Yeah.
Hmm.
So.
You wanna sell a bid out there?
I don't got nothing to do with that.
Wanna stay with the train, I mean, the condensing units, and we don't wanna, you know, so, you know, come let us reason together.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Is there any part of this system that you think, you mentioned on the next, proposal does not include the replacement if a pair of any devices not strictly mentioned in this scope of work? Is that, if anything, is there older system, is it in good shape, I mean, that we're working with?
Yes, sir. And this will, for example, like say a water heater, one of the water heaters that's on the existing control system, say it goes bad while we're, like, before we even start work, we're saying, we're not gonna go replace a water heater, 'cause it's not part of the scope of work.
Okay.
So you'll be kinda like the project engineer on this, or what's, what will be your role?
My role is, as a sales account manager, is I put the project together, and then I turn it over to my operations team, which is project manager superintendent. And he actually does the day-to-day execution of the work, but I work very closely with Mr. Scott and Mr. Billy and all them. You know, they can call, they can call me anytime, and, you know, I'll be down here.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Any more? Y'all got anything else?
I don't.
You?
I don't.
Okay.
Thank you for y'all's time.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay. All right, I'll carry that over. KB, Resolution 2024-20, municipal tax collection services agreement with the city of Ware Cross.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I thought Roger was supposed to be here, I don't see him, but he asked for this contract to be placed on the agenda. It's more of a repeat of the contract he had before with the city of Ware Cross to collect taxes on their behalf, and so I'm submitting that, I don't know if there's any questions you have of him, but I thought he'd be here today. I don't know if there's any, if there's any legal questions that the attorney can answer, but.
So Scott, it's pretty much the same thing, like it's always been, been for the last, what, two or three years?
For his last.
Every year.
Yes, it's a, it's a four-year contract.
Yeah. Well, I see where we, I guess, signed it, then it automatically renews three years, you know, unless something.
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Any more questions on that?
No, sir.
Okay, let's carry that one. White dirt road paving, C, dirt road paving engineering proposal, statewide engineering.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I, I touched base with statewide engineering to get a proposal on the two roads that were brought up at the last meeting, to be paved with L-MIG funds. And they submitted a proposal, and some further conversation with him, I put a note in the agenda packet there that we, I had a conversation with Mark Deal with statewide. And, and I thought this was true, but I wasn't sure I was gonna go back and look myself before he called me. And Big Pen Road and Gibbs Lane, the two that you picked to have paved, is on the regional T-Splat list. And based on what he was telling me, they ran in this with Coffee County, is that you cannot, they will not allow any substitutions if the county, or the city for that matter, goes and paves a road that's on the list, and then tries to swap one out once they get started. So I just wanted to make y'all aware of that. And so from that standpoint, to carry it a little bit further, if you pave, if you go and pave roads like this, you're looking at quite a bit of work, preliminary work, design, utility relocation, right-of-way acquisition, those kinda things, and it can take a while. With L-MIG funds, you've got a, you've got a maximum of three years there that you can get the project done. And with one like Big Pen, if it's a longer road, you're gonna, you're probably gonna get close to getting to that three-year period, depending on how the right-of-way goes, and utilities. 'Cause we all know, utility companies do not get in a hurry to, to move their utilities. We faced that on Smith Road ourselves, but, but it's, it's a note I put in there, just a, something to think about, that you could use L-MIG to resurface, and that you could use local funds to do paving. That way you're not, you know, behind the clock, so to speak, just try to get it done within a three-year period. But those two roads, as I was saying to begin with, they're on the regional T-Splat list, so if you do those now, you won't be allowed to swap them out when the regional, new regional T-Splat phase starts.
So we'll basically just be giving that money out?
Basically, they'll, they'll take it and use it for something else. And not only that, regional T-Splat is a 10-year program, and it could be those two roads get pushed to the end, closer to eight, nine, 10 years down the road. And if there's a need to get it paved, you know, you can see that, is, one of the things, I made a note, so when the process gets kicked off, is to get with DOT right away to find out, with y'all's conversation, what roads that we see needs to be paved out of that, that regional T-Splat list within the first couple, three years, and then try to get them put at the front, and then the rest of them fall behind. So that's, that's an option there.
How long has this regional T-Splat been going on now?
Uh, right now, it's been going on, I think, right over seven years, if I'm not mistaken. No, a little less than seven years.
How many projects have we, how many projects have we got out of it?
Uh, let's see, how?
None.
Let me get my calculator out. I think somewhere between zero and one.
Yeah.
The only, and the only one that we really got was the Albany Avenue situation. City of Ware Cross was shorted about 700 and some odd thousand dollars on Albany Avenue. And we were allotted, Ware County was allotted 600,000 to do our portion of Albany Avenue. Well, in order to get Albany Avenue, especially in the city, redone, because it was literally awful, the county, Ware County gave that money upfront for it to be applied to the, to the down, I call it the downtown portion of Albany Avenue, 'cause it was the worst. And so that's what got that over. But other than that, nothing else. We did get charged for the bridge that they're replacing on between here and Blacksheer, so.
Okay.
You wanna count that one?
Does that include 25% discretionary funds?
Uh, we get those funds, that's on top of projects.
But we've done projects with that.
We have, yeah, we have, and those are, those are local calls, the county commission gets to decide what, what money, what roads get done with it.
So we have, we have gotten projects from the T-Splat.
Yes, we have, but there's, they're local projects, meaning the county commission decided, so. But you could use regional T-Splat to do any of these roads that you, you all would want to get paid. It's, I mean, it's open to do that. We've used very little of the regional T-Splat money for, for road paving.
L-MIG money comes from the state, so I'm assuming that the state, it has to be, meet state requirements, and they will supervise it?
Yes, yes. They, they, it, it all has to meet DOT design standards.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So Scott, when you're talking about this, say, these two roads are on the second cycle of the regional T-Splat, so I guess I'm assuming we're in the first cycle right now?
We're, yes, sir, we're in the first 10 years, if you wanna call it that, and we, it was just renewed by vote referendum just a month or two ago, I think, can't remember, May, during May. And so you'll have another 10-year period to go, if collections go the way they think they're gonna go. The first one is actually abbreviated, because the collections came in faster than what they thought, so it's gonna end sooner. So they're expecting probably within the next year and a half or so, that the first one's gonna go, will end soon, sooner than expected.
And so you said that we could, even, even though we're in that second cycle, we don't know at what part of the second cycle, so we could make an appeal to try to get those, if they're way down?
That's correct.
Moved up to the front?
Yeah, those cycles are broken up in three band, what they call bands, first band, second band, third band. And then typically what they try to do is they, they spread the money out so it evens out through all the bands. And sometimes, some counties and cities aren't ready to go on the first band, and their projects get moved to the second band, and if there's room, and you're ready to go, and ready to get it done, or wanting to get it done, they'll throw it on the first band and go, go that route.
So right now, so in the regional T-Splat, and you're saying if we were to go and pave these two roads, then as Commissioner Lucas alluded to, we would basically be giving up that money for those roads, because we've already paid them?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And, and Mark Deal with statewide confirmed that, 'cause they tried to do that with Coffee County, and DOT says, no, we will, we will not, only because it was voted on by the state legislature. So those, those roads are locked in. Now, as I said, sometimes they get moved around, but you can't change the roads. It's only based on schedules.
They must move them between the bands?
Yeah, basically, yes, sir.
It's gotta be the same, same roads. We didn't get anything for the first six years we, and the next. If these, if these is at the end, then we subject not to even get them anyway?
It's very possible. I mean, it'll be quite a few years.
Yeah.
And that's the prob, that's, that's one of the things I personally see wrong with it. Sometimes.
Right.
If you, if they push it back and you can't get it pushed up, you may be waiting on that road to get paid for many years, even though the.
We get L-MIG every six months?
About every six to seven months, usually, as they, they send the letters out early, you can go ahead and turn in your application and get the funds and get started, but usually they send them, it's a little less than a year each time.
Yeah. I noticed the estimate. Yeah, I noticed the estimate was high on this, but we're not going as far as he says, not the Scapa Drive Road. We're only going to Lovett Road, which is gonna be about a half a mile shorter.
That's correct, yes. I think it's going, um...
Yeah.
From Lovett Road up to, um...
Pine Valley.
Pine Valley.
To Pine Valley, which is a lot shorter.
Pine View.
Yeah. And, uh...
So we kinda, kinda in the wondering right now, I mean, if we paved the road now, then they're on this regional T-Splosh, we won't be able to, I mean, basically just be giving them up?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
If you, if you go ahead and do them, and they're scheduled to be done with regional, they won't allow you to place that, that money that you, that come up on something else. They, uh, what they do with it, I don't know. I'm sure they put it back in the pot and spread it back out again.
But how many?
Give it to Eccles County.
We've got a lot.
They'll give it to Eccles County.
Yeah.
No, Coffee County.
So let me ask you, Scott, let me throw this into the equation, okay, so with our splosh funds right now, which, praise the Lord, they're coming in good, and by the first of year, we should have met our, uh, obligations for the overpass and all that, right?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
After that time, we have monies in there that the county get for six percent, see, forty percent, but out of that six percent, we got monies in there that we can use for paving.
That's correct, yes, sir.
So instead of having to wait and gamble, like I say, on this regional T-Splosh, at that time, I guess, this commission or some commission can make a decision as to use some of that money...
Right.
Paid, rather than just kinda wait, because we don't never know how long that would be.
Correct, yeah, and we, and we created that budget for the, the, the splosh, the splosh that we're using the money to build the overpass with. Once that starts coming in, sixty, forty, and we, as the county, uh, approved, the county commission approved about eighteen million dollars worth of road work.
That's what I'm saying.
So you could use that. I mean, you, we could actually go ahead and, and, you know, have them design, and then once you get designed done, because you gotta get the right-of-way and utilities moved and stuff, so that takes quite a bit of time.
So I guess what I'm looking at is if we, if, which I know we voted on all that, but if we went back and, you know, uh, I guess, retracted, uh, you know, brought it back up, then we could take and use the monies from the splosh when it comes in to do these two roads and other roads, but in the meantime, we could take the L-MIG funds we have now and do some resurfacing and surface treatment, whatever. But in the same, at the same time, we could still be getting the, uh, design and everything done, so that when the money come in, we could go on.
Yeah, or, I mean, you could pick, you know, maybe two other roads that need paving, whatever, you know, whatever the commission wants to do. It's just that those two roads are on that regional list and...
I would hate, I would hate to do those roads and, you know, the regional people come up and say, hey, you've done those roads, so you don't get the funds now.
Right.
I mean, I...
I, I, I don't, I got, we, we, they can put it on the other roads, on more roads.
They can put it on more.
See, they got, we got a big list on there.
Yeah, but they...
That'll never be covered.
That's what Mr. Scott was saying. He said that...
Yeah.
If we, if we go ahead and pave them roads now, that regional T-Splosh, the regional one, we can't put two other roads in there.
But you can bump up all the roads that you want to come up first, like, say, like in the first band or the second band.
Like these two?
Yes, you can bump them up to be the first, but what, sound like we don't get, we don't get to do a lot of projects through this thing, to me, right?
Well, that's 'cause we never really asked. Isn't that right, Mr. Scott?
Yeah, we have, I think, I can't remember right off, but there's roughly, I think, around twenty million dollars in the new regional T-Splosh that will start a couple, three years from now, in that budget. Um, the first one, the first go-around, Wecross, Ware County didn't really get anything at all.
And, and that, that didn't, we submitted stuff, but didn't get nothing.
That's correct.
So we could go eight years and them not even, we paying any of this splosh our county has and not get nothing.
Yeah, they have a regional.
Yeah, I think over...
Paying in six years, ain't never got nothing, no doubt.
Yep.
What?
We get nothing.
So we might not never get a road on that list.
Well, you, you had, you will, that, once that list approved, they will have to do it now because it's part of the referendum.
Yeah.
Um, and it was an approved list. Now, this first one, the one we're in right now, uh, there was a list that we created. Brandon and I went over and did the presentation back in two thousand seventeen, I think, and, uh, had quite a bit on there. And, um, when it all shook out, we didn't, I think we got, not counting discretionary money, we got a six hundred thousand dollar project, which was that portion of Albany Avenue, uh, and the bridge.
Yeah.
They charged us with that, and Wecross got Knight Avenue, um, and maybe one or two more, and that was it.
So...
So it's that legislation's discretion, really?
Yeah, so they, they, they get to pick. The executive committee gets to pick based on, uh, with DOT's suggestions and recommendations.
So would it be fair to say that, I wanna say this right, that politics kinda plays into this some kind of...
Oh, it did in the first one?
Yeah. That's what, that's what I was saying.
We ain't got no guarantee that we gonna get any of them roads ready.
Well, I think we just said that they had already voted on it, and these two roads are in that.
We're on that list, that's correct. We'll get it on, damn, one, two, or three.
But they've already been approved.
Correct, yeah, definitely gonna get them. Definitely gonna get them, you just don't know when. Could be eight years from now.
Could be, yes.
Could be ten.
These was in the, uh, first go-around. Big Pin Road was in the first go-around, wasn't it, you? It was reading, it was in the first one, Leonard's.
We, we had a few of them.
It was in the first.
Well, we have a list, but they, they threw it out.
Big Pin was in the first one, and it never got paved in the first one.
Yeah, they, yeah, they threw it out.
But that was before we had James Burchette as our representative, too.
Yeah, this was in...
I mean, that, that's before we had him in there.
This was in eighteen, two thousand eighteen.
Sixty-eight million dollars on the bridge, and they wouldn't help us.
But that was before James Burchette was in office.
Yeah.
And James fights for us when he's up there. I mean, he does.
So, Mr. Chairman, are you, you on that board, or? As chairman, you on there?
Yeah.
Might have twisted a couple of arms or something, you know? Don't seem like me, we getting kinda the wrong end of the deal.
Yeah. Okay. Carry it over. No more discretionary.
Well, now you say we're gonna carry this over by these two roads?
I voted down.
All right, so, because if we, uh, we already voted, you know, for those two roads, and I don't know how, maybe the attorney can tell us how, if we want to change something about it, because if we vote on them, then we still got a deficit there of what, about a million, two?
Yes, it's about the double.
We got, it's about to come up with a double.
Well...
Well, we can have another, we'll have another L-MIG coming in for its design program.
It was a...
We'd have the money to pay them, we had, I think, we oughta go ahead and pay them. That's what we got.
Scott, you said the L-MIG come, get about twice a year?
Well, they, they send them, they send them out about every seven to eight months, the letters, and if you go ahead and do the application, turn it in, they, within a couple, three weeks, they send you the money, if it's, if the application's approved.
So this is the twenty twenty-five?
Yes.
So then if we get ready twenty twenty-six, and we get say the same amount, then basically we'll be using up all two years for those two roads?
Correct, yes, sir.
Yeah.
And if we pay them and they've been approved, we're not gonna be able to change them. We can't add two more.
Okay.
All right, what y'all wanna do? Yeah, carry it over.
Okay, carry it over. Okay, let's go to D, Recreation Advisory Board Bylaw Revision.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I emailed a, uh, a new version, I guess you could say, to you that, uh, Jennifer wrote, and I believe it's in your packet there, I'm not sure. I know I emailed it to you, um, but it was a new one.
I don't understand all of this. It, it's been coming up, and you may have to explain that to me, 'cause I don't... I thought the board, that we need a board to bring it, bring us the information that we need to, whatever improvement or whatever we need for the recreation department.
That's what I thought it was, too.
I, I thought that's what it's for, and it says that we don't need a board, so who, do we need a board, or do we not need a board?
I think, Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, they had a board, I guess it's not functional, then we pick new members for the board, but then what we were saying, and the rec director, and I think, uh, maybe the managing attorney said, well, okay, if you got this new board, then maybe it's time to look at these bylaws and see if it's in a revision we need to make to them, and this is what we have, of course, is the revisions that they're saying, you know, maybe that we need to, uh, I guess, adopt, of making alterations to them if we deem it necessary. And, uh, we just got this Friday, I believe it was, and I was thinking, maybe it's something that maybe we should, should look over and if any commissioner got any, you know, reservation about anything, we can bring it up, but if not, you know, and talking with, uh, the director, he pretty much, you know, say everything is pretty much like they think it should be, and we just wanna try to make sure that this board function as a board to really help, to aid and to, uh, support the rec department, and not, for lack of a better term, start trying to micromanage the rec department, but they do have a role as board members to try to help, you know, uh, promote the recreational Ware County. And, uh, so that's, that's why I said, but I think that it's something that maybe, since we just got it, we kinda look over it a little bit more, and we already picked the board members, I believe, we already got that one.
Yes, sir. Did you, Ms.?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll just clarify that the Georgia code does allow for, authorize a county to create a recreation board. Ware County has done that, excuse me, in past years, so your recreation board has been created. Now, it has been inactive, is my understanding, these past few years, and so then there was some interest expressed in getting that active again. Uh, members were even appointed, I think, at recent meetings, and then as part of that process, um, they asked, uh, both the rec director and I, and, and the county manager, to take an eye at the, the old version of the bylaws and see, is there anything that needs updating? Is there anything that, you know, 'cause we are sort of starting fresh, even though there is already in existence this board. And so that's what you should have in front of you. I will note, I'm just looking at the one that's in this packet. This is not the latest version. This does not include, uh, Lance's changes, so I would, um, second Commissioner Versus's request that you all have some time to study these. Um, I'll give you two caveats, you know, one is I've included a couple of statutes. Some things are set by statute. How, how long the terms are, you know, those sorts of things, and so, um, anything that's set by statute, we wouldn't go outside of that. Uh, but outside of that, you know, there may be, um, specific interests you all have locally that may be different than other communities. Some communities appoint members based on, uh, certain areas of representation in the county, some, you know, do it based on sports interest. I mean, it really, there's a, a wide range of how that's done, and so, you know, you all, if there is anything before you that you find not satisfactory, let's take an eye at it, see if it is something that comes from the statute, and if not, then it's cer, certainly something we can discuss. We wanna get it, the rec board is meant to be a tool to prevent, to help serve, you know, the recreation department, the community. I mean, you don't want, I've seen communities where every single complaint about any umpire, about what sports are being offered, come up to your county commission. That is not an ideal scenario for a lot of different reasons, and so, uh, the idea is that this board would be, uh, you know, serving in an advisory capacity, it would be helping, um, our rec director to promote recreation in Ware County. I mean, that's the idea.
And then, in reading over those, uh, and I have talked with a couple commissioners about this already individually, but there was only one thing that I don't like in there, and that was that somebody not be appointed to the rec if there was a commissioner related to them that was a city commissioner. I don't think that's right, you know? And that, that's the only one that I just, you know, question about, and I just say, I've talked with a couple commissioners about that, and I think we're in agreement, so...
That's fine. Any direction that the commission would like to give back to staff on any issues like that, we're glad to hear it, and we'll, we'll get it revised accordingly.
So, if I may, Mr. Chairman, if you do, if you look?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I, I guess, that's something that was put in there, that the turnus saw pit to put in there about their relationship, and if so, I guess there's a reason why that's in there.
There are some, you know, some versions that, um, that different counties have, you know, as far as what I call a nepotism policy, to, um, to control there being, uh, favoritism shown when choosing members. Now, very often in small communities, um, and, and, and I will say, nepotism policies can be very broad, or they can be very narrow. Uh, we, the one that is in there currently is to the second degree, so that would include brothers, sisters, aunt, uncles, grandparents, you know, things of that sort, but it's not gonna include third cousins. Um, but, you know, in a small community, very quickly, someone could be very well qualified, but otherwise ineligible because of, um, because of a, a, you know, familial relationship with a commissioner, so that's, you know, that's for you all to determine if you think that would be helpful and or appropriate, um, but it is an option.
So this is not the final recommendation that you have?
No, this, I just was glancing at it. This, I know, does not contain the rec, uh, rec director's changes, because he and I spoke at length, I believe, either Thursday or Friday, and I, and I know that this version does not contain that, so...
So this is the bylaws that they go by now?
No, this is, no, we looked at the bylaws that they have currently, and it is, it is a very old draft. Um, and so this is a version that, um, our office has used for other boards that have been created more recently, so it's more updated language, um... Many, many of the same provisions, though, just better language, in my opinion.
Okay, but the one that we, Scott sent us, that's not the one, that's not the latest version?
That's right.
No, no, the one in your agenda packet, it, I've emailed the other version, uh, Friday, when you sent it.
And maybe for clarity, what might be nice for you all is, um, if we ask the clerk to print the old, the old, I'm gonna say the old bylaws, which is what's currently in place in Ware County, and then we'll say the new bylaws, which is the most recent recommendation that's been looked over by the county manager, the county attorney, and the rec director, and let you all look at those and, um, see what you like. But like I said, the goal is to get a functioning board that can be, um, a good support to the rec director, and, uh, to have by, have bylaws that will govern that. Whatever you all ultimately determine appropriate in those bylaws, certainly glad to discuss.
Any more? Ain't gonna discuss all that, those are the... I don't want one either. No, what, okay, carry it over.
I don't think we're gonna carry this one over.
Recreation Advisory Board Bylaw Revision?
We're not gonna carry this one over.
Ain't gonna vote on it?
Not gonna duck out on it. Really, we don't hate to have a new one.
We don't have it, don't have anything to vote on.
What I recommend is, is let us get you all a copy of the old bylaws and the new bylaws, and let you have some time to study on it, and then we can ask, um, the county manager to add it to the next meeting if you all would like.
I think that'd be...
I think that'd be good. Table it? Okay. All right, that's gonna be, request to advertise for sealed bids, airport properties timber cut. Uh-oh. I'm setting one to the chain gang for that. I don't know, I won't get in on that. Who want to cut the timber now? Airport, I thought.
Got the manager back there, Mr. Frank, he's back there.
Here he comes.
Here he comes. We're getting to see you regularly, Mr. Frank.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon.
How you doing?
Uh, this is approximately a seventy-two acre tract of land. It may grow a little bit more, maybe seventy-five acres. Um, and includes part of that parcel that was just recently purchased. And is, uh, from Harris Road all the way down. So if you're at the Sheriff's Office where that timber begins at the approach end of Runway Three-One, and take that all the way down to where Georgia Forestry Ground Division is, to clear that whole tract of timber out. Uh, the majority of that timber is all volunteer timber, so that's what grew up and was cleared out about nineteen years ago, right before the hangers that are there now were built. Um, this is going to serve a few purposes. One, uh, to start clearing some timber out that's old growth, that's worth some money. Um, two, it's going to allow that area to be developed. And that's part of that, um, hanger group that is interested in building hangers around that section of the Grigo tract that we purchased. So that clears that timber out, uh, allows, and starts growing it, allows them to come in and have better access to build. And then whatever money we're able to recoup from that timber, we can then reinvest in airport infrastructure, either by way of continuing the sewer line that's already existing that would then tie in to the hangers that they would build by renting land from us, or any additional hangers that we may build as a county later on down the road. So that's where that money will come back into. Uh, the second part, and with this RFP, just to see what kind of bite we can get, we have about two hundred and fifty more acres that need to be cleared completely, because we just received back our live on results. And that is a, um, a type of scanning that was done, uh, Georgia Department of Natural Resources, along with, uh, G.D.O. Aviation conducted this study last year to video and record all the landing areas of all the airports in Georgia. Uh, we have height restrictions in those areas. So, uh, three of our six, uh, landing areas have penetrating trees that go up into that area. So I want to see what kind of bite we can get on this. Um, if these companies are interested in this RFP, then that will then lead into round two of getting those other areas cleared out. Right now, they're not a, an issue per se for pilots. We're addressing it by, what I just told you, we're working to get those cleared. And that satisfies what G.D.O. needs us to do that we're aware. And then we start working on getting them cleared out.
So that, right now, you said two hundred and fifty acres?
It's about between those three approach areas. So if you're familiar with Kettle Creek, uh, that runs on the east side of the airport, uh, that encompasses, uh, the approach end of, uh, Runway One-Three, and then taking that around, if you're going towards Public Works and the prison, that's the approach end of Runway Two-Three. That's that large tract. The airport, along with certain section of Public Works, owns all the land up until the west side of Kettle Creek that Disher runs there. So that's all county airport land that would have to be cleared. And then taking that around, there's some areas on the approach of One-Nine that are both on the, uh, south end of Harris Road. And then there's that area that we have some farmland on that backside. There's a long row of timber that would have to be cleared out as well.
Have you, you'll have to check with EPA, because you have to have buffers on left in wet areas and stuff like that.
Yes, sir.
Because you, you have to, you have to back off of some of that.
Yes, sir. We've already been in contact with the engineers. They're working to either have to purchase other wetland area where they do that acre-for-acre or one-for-one deal. Um, I've already had that process started. Most of the area that's going to be cleared, the RPZ, what they call the RPZ, Runway Protection Zone, um, most of that is in a dried-out area. It's where it starts to slope down towards that Kettle Creek. But if you're going to clear out a couple acres in there, it just makes more sense to start thinning out or clearing those other surrounding acres available, bringing that money in, uh, to make it worthwhile, as well as making that area available for any other, uh, growth that we may be able to deal with.
Yeah, they probably won't let you clear all the way to that creek, did.
Not all the way to the creek, no, sir. But that's that area that it's encroaching on.
But it's not two hundred and fifty total areas that needs to be clear, right?
No, sir. No, sir. It's just that area back there is about two hundred and fifty total that lives around.
Yeah. We don't need a buffer zone there for wind or anything?
Uh, no, sir.
First trees?
We don't.
But right now, uh, Frank, what you asking for the seventy-three or seventy-two acres?
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's on the totally opposite end of what?
Yes, sir. It's on the west end, yes, sir.
And the other one at the two-fifty, that's the Kettle Creek area, right somewhere there.
Well, I think my guess is a good idea if you make some money, use land cleaning up for them to build the hangers.
And I think, Mr. Frank alluded to the company he's already spoke with. That's the area that they're wanting to put those four big hangers in, right?
Yes, sir.
We've already purchased that other land, what, three acres of?
Yes, sir.
That's that piece down in that corner right there.
Yes, sir.
Draw that right there. Okay.
I think it's a good idea. I think so.
Now, that black box.
Okay.
I think it's good, Frank.
I don't know if you all have a chance to go out there, but, uh, and I'm not saying it's because he's standing there, but Frank is doing a phenomenal job out there. He's got a lot of, and obviously, he's keeping up with a lot of different moving parts out there right now. He's got that, uh, charging station going on. Uh, they poured cement for the building. I don't know when they're going to get started on it, but they've got that done. And, uh, the fencing thing, he's trying to do everything, keep the, keep, what we want to keep going, repairing those holes where they're breaching that fence out there. And, uh, also, can you mention anything about Savannah deal?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, last week, uh, Thursday morning, I got a call from Savannah Aviation, the owner. It's about a forty-two aircraft fleet that does, uh, training, everything from private pilot all the way through to commercial. Uh, they're going to be permanently basing weather planes here, starting, uh, either the end of this week or next week. Um, and that's going to offer another avenue for training for our community and surrounding communities. Um, it's a, what they call a one-forty-one, or Part One-Forty-One School. So it's a, um, structured educational form, if you want to get your degree. Or you can just go and do it recreationally, get your license. Uh, but they're going to have one plane to start. They may move to by the end of the year, seeing on how everything goes with, uh, the turnout and the response from the community.
Okay. Did I understand you say that, like, the flight lesson, right?
Yes, sir.
That the Chairman of the Commission, they're going to give it to him free. He can, then he can get up and fly around and check stuff?
Yes.
I may have, I would have said that.
Okay, okay. Well, I maybe, maybe I dreamed that.
Just take him, take him up high. Take him up real high.
Well, I tell you, that's, that's good, Frank. And, uh, I think we're blessed to have you out there.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
I mean, I'm not saying that to blow smoke, uh, and, uh, it's just, it's a good, good thing, a lot of the thing, positive things happening out there.
I think you're doing a fabulous job, Frank. So don't go put your application in nowhere. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Frank. Oh, one more thing, Mr. Frank. Did we go ahead and get those vehicles ordered? Have they, since we approved them?
Yes, sir. Players standing already been, uh, tagged, and they should be in, uh, usual.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Carry it over. Okay, Appointment for the Ware County Board of Elections and Registration. We have three, I believe, on it.
I read, I said it's four, Mr. Chairman.
Four. Have one more that came in, that's right. Y'all have any discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman, um, Ms. Deborah Giddens is here on behalf of the Republican Party, the ones that were, uh, to nominate. And I think she, she can address the Commission on her recommendation letter.
Would you come up, please, Ms. Deborah?
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, thank you for opportunity to speak for a few minutes. Um, the process that we've followed in, uh, recommending nominees to you is that we, um, sent an email out to our membership with an explanation of what's required, uh, in the position, um, what they're expected to do when the meetings occur. And, uh, we asked for anybody that was interested, um, to, uh, so, ask for an application and then to submit the application to our County Committee. So August twentieth at noon was the deadline for, uh, applications to be in. And on that same day, August twentieth, that afternoon at five, our county, Ware County Republican Party County Committee met, which is basically our executive board. We met to look at the, um, nominee, or the applicants, and then to come up with, um, the ones that we would recommend to you for your consideration. So you can see by my letter that, um, our Republican Party County Committee, that governing body of our party, submitted, um, three names for your consideration. Uh, Mr. Vernon Chalmers, Ms. Pamela Taylor, and Ms. Karen Woodard. Um, they, um, completed the process, um, correctly. And, uh, these were the names that the, uh, County Board, County Committee, um, sent to you for your consideration. And, uh, I am required, as the party chairperson, then, to send to you the results of the meeting. And so you receive the letter, which explains what we did. So, uh, our party sent three nominees, not, not four, but three.
The party just sent three, then, but it's four. Is that correct?
I think there is a fourth resume.
Yeah, more of them. There's a fourth resume.
The party gets?
That was not approved by the party.
Oh, she, they wasn't approved by the party? Okay.
That's correct.
They weren't submitted by the party?
But, yeah, only three were submitted by the party for you to, um, consider.
The other one has not been approved by the party, is that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. And I, if I'm not mistaken, uh, the individual, the fourth name that was submitted, like I said, was after, you know, you sent this letter out, was someone that you all had, uh, wanted to be on there, like, maybe a couple of years ago. And so that's the, that's the resume that we all got, you know, as the fourth individual.
Well, about a year ago, when you were considering, um, an appointment, um, uh, because there was a board in place of four people, and those four people, um, elected a chairman, and they elected Mr. Danny Bartlett as their chairman. So that left his, uh, seat on the board vacant. So you had to, um, put another person on the board. And so at that time, um, we submitted three names. And, um, that fourth person was on the list at that time, about a year ago. We submitted three names. But our names were not selected at that time. Uh, you, um, appointed, uh, Ms. Marion Solomon Gaines to that position about a year ago. So those were, you know, those are nominees at that time. So now, um, we had some new, new not applicants. And so we recommended three people to you for your consideration.
Okay.
If it's all right, would?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, are those three people here today? Are they here now?
Yes, they are. Would you like me to introduce them?
Please, and just, if it's all right?
Yeah, if they'll stand and busy caller names out.
If they would stand and, is it all right if they come up and introduce themselves?
We had Mr. Vernon Chalmers, Ms. President. And we had Ms. Pam, Pam Wood Taylor, President. And we had Ms. Karen Wood, President.
Would y'all like to hear something from them? Just maybe a minute or two?
I thought, now, this is Ms.
I'm Tyler.
Taylor, okay, yeah. I talked to each one of them, and, uh, you know, just as a courtesy, you know?
Thank you.
And, uh, but I didn't know them, you know, by face recognition, and, um, Ms. Taylor and, and Mr. Chalmers, the Chalmers, okay. And, uh, and like I said, since that time, then this other individual come up, that was in the running, I would say, for lack of a better term, the last time.
Yeah, the last time.
Right. And, uh, and he's very interested, you know, and, but again, I appreciate it, conversating with each other.
Well, to, maybe to clarify a bit, that fourth individual, uh, did send me a text message saying that his job was, posed a conflict in him being able to attend the meetings.
Okay.
At this point, at this point.
He is on here.
Yeah. My understanding is that
It's Mr. Dawker.
That, that, for the Election Board, their meeting, it's not set in stone that they have to have them. When they have them, then they could change, you know, the time.
Yeah, I, I guess that would be my understanding. It would be up to that, uh, Board of Elections registration to decide what they want to do.
Mr. Scott, do we have time for each of them to come up? About a minute?
It's up to y'all, really.
Would you like to hear from them about a minute?
That's fine, I'm with me.
Would y'all like to come up and just tell us why y'all are interested in being on there?
Let me put y'all on the spot real quick.
Put you on the spot, put you in the hot seat real quick.
Good afternoon. My name is Vernon Chalmers. Um, I've been a lawyer here in White Cross for about thirty-nine years. Um, my practice is right here on Longview Avenue. And, um, also been a, uh, volunteer fighter in Ware County for sixteen years, now it's Station Three, um, South Side. And, um, been active in a lot of civic organizations, you know, National Water Federation, being Dean, uh, uh, Stewart, started that thirty-four years ago. Um, I actually been, uh, Ducks Unlimited, um, on that committee. Also been a civil, I mean, a civil mediator, um, and international relations mediator. I don't know if y'all know what mediation does, but, you know, um, um, sometimes when parties get together and they can't, there's a lawsuit, and they can't work things out, then the judge will appoint a mediator. And what I do is I sit down and talk with the parties, and we try to work out, you know, work out an understanding. I've been pretty good at that for like three or four years. I'm in the process now of slowing down my practice. Me and Dean, uh, Stewart, I'm Strickland, or Fishtail, are building. So I'm going to be practicing out in my house. And, um, pretty much it. I got married about eleven years ago. My wife's a, uh, a pharmaceutical rep, a nurse for, you know, pharmaceutical companies, and we, um, live out Central Avenue.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Vernon.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Pam Taylor. I live here in White Cross, Alabama. I live out in Central Avenue. I was in the baking industry for about forty years. And when my daughter got out of college, she kind of retired. And now I'm actually in the media. I'm a salesperson for a trade media that I sell billboards. What a fun job now. Um, but ever since my kids were little and old enough, I would take them to the polls for me to show them the importance of voting. And I just feel like that's just an important role in our, in our, in our history, in our, our community, that we got to make sure that our kids, the young ones as well as the old ones, get out and vote, and they're, they're kept in correctly. And that's just why we like to be involved in this because the importance of, of what it means to our community and our country.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin.
That's from Danny.
Ms. Karen?
My name is Karen Woodard. Um, I live in White Cross.
That's what I.
I'm a retired postmaster. I've been a postmaster sixteen years. I worked for the post office thirty-three years. Like I said, I'm retired, but I do a lot of volunteer work, and I volunteer poll watching. And that's what's got me interested in the position. And, uh, I just have a passion for, uh, uh, the, the integrity of the, uh, elections.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Yeah, one other thing, um, I did get, um, training to be a poll worker, admin to elections. Uh, so that's what got me involved in, in the election.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay.
Mr. Dawker, he's not present.
I don't think he's considered.
I don't, I guess. So he's not, he's not here? Doctor? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you all have in front of you the revised enabling legislation for the Board of Elections, but I was just gonna remind you all, under that most recent revision, based on my recollection, that, you know, the party here has the ability to nominate. You all certainly can accept nominations from other people. You yourselves could propose a name that's neither on any of those lists, but ultimately, it's up to this board to determine who to appoint to that position.
Exactly.
Just wanted to remind you all of, of that revised language.
We need to do that in the work session, or carry it over?
We would need to do that in the public meeting. So if, if, if you all desire to discuss anything at this time, that certainly would be appropriate, but the vote would need to be taken during the call meeting.
Do any of y'all have anybody particularly, y'all wanna add to this list?
I don't.
Do you have, you have anybody? Okay.
I think it's a pretty good list of people.
Yeah. Okay. So we don't have any more to add to it, so we'll choose some of these four. Okay, and we'll have to carry it over to the meeting then, okay? All right, let's carry it over. Discussion and possible action concerning Ware County's bicentennial funding support, okay?
Yes, Sir Commissioners, I ask that this be put on this agenda today. I have talked with both parties that are here, Mr. Roy, Ms. Marla, and this is for the celebrating Ware County's two-hundredth year coming up shortly. And I think it's a big deal, it's a big thing. You know, Ware County's original seat used to be Wasbourn before it was moved here. And they're both here, and they could probably, they'll definitely include you in a, in a lot of information that they have learned, even when they started the process. I think they gained more information about Ware County and Waycross as a whole since they started the venture. So if y'all'd like to come up and tell the commission. This is on the bicentennial.
They've come to talk about it already, right?
Yes. And this is the question.
This is Paul.
It's been an ongoing process, and it's still in process. We have, the next event is our gala, bicentennial gala. And we really would like to see everybody there. And that's part of the issues of, we really need our county to support what we're doing, because it is for the county. And without the county's support, we need you guys talking it up. I mean, this is coming up quick now. We're on the last legs. We've got it, what, Christmas is a hundred and like ninety-six days out, and this is two weeks before that, so we're in the short leg of the deal, but there's a lot going on that's gonna take the events between now and then. Other than the bicentennial gala, we're still selling here. Guys, take a look at this, these are the coins.
Can you run us, oh, eight, one, six coins?
Yeah, you got that, yeah, in a second. There, we're actually selling those for twenty-five dollars with the hard fundraiser. So we've got the coins, we still have T-shirts, we've got another T-shirt coming up for our fundraiser. Right now, there's also dueling pistols that were actually built by one of our Marines, retired Marines here in Waycross that lives here. Gunny's Peacemakers is actually the ones that built the two dueling pistols, and they're gorgeous. They're sitting down at the cafe, if anybody'd like to come and see them. But we're selling tickets for those as well. That's probably gonna be pulled the night of the fourteenth in December, out at the fairgrounds for the event, for the winner for that. The tickets are fifteen dollars, or four for fifty. But these two guns were hand-built, they are workable, and they're gorgeous. Right now, our main concern is to get this gala under control. We've got entertainment that night, upstairs and downstairs. There'll be dinner, dancing, drinks. And it's out, right out here at the Park Pines Lakeside venue, out on Central Avenue, so it's local. And we've got couples, or a hundred and seventy-five dollars for a couple, or a table of eight for seven hundred. And I'm gonna leave this here with you, too, so if you guys can just really get participating with this and getting the word out, we would greatly appreciate it. On this event, event, if they buy a table, they'll also get recognition the week, the entire weekend in December, as well as on the next T-shirt, and it'll be on an advertisement as well. So I'll leave this up there real fast, too.
When are you and Steve gonna duel?
You what?
When are you and Steve gonna duel?
You won't want that one, we'll get the rest of them.
The duel that's to take place, when are you and Steve gonna duel?
When we're done?
Yeah.
Oh, any day. Any questions? We have fireworks planned, we've got, yeah, oh, again, we need four more. We've got the fireworks planned for Saturday night, we've got a car show going on over at the fairgrounds. There's several events being planned that afternoon. And then, again, it will be all of the different venues throughout the county are gonna be doing events so that people can go throughout the county and see all of our venues that we have, including Centers Museum, their sports museum, the Board of Education, they're gonna keep it open, Obadiah's out at the Trembling Earth, the Swamp Park will have, their normal issue is that they have the lights, of course, for Christmas, so it will be there as well. But all these different events will be going on all day long. And for the kickoff is the Chamber of Commerce's parade on Friday night. Later on, on Saturday, is all day, and Sunday will be the finale. It will be between one and about five o'clock, it'll end. We'll have, all of you guys need to come Sunday and be presented on stage. We're gonna have a birthday cake, and so you've gotta participate with us with that. So please, just be a part of the community. It's a big deal. Two hundred years isn't gonna happen again. And we really need everybody to lock arms and let's go for this, because it's a, it's an event for the community. There will be no charge to the community, it'll be free, there's entertainment all night Friday night, all day long on Saturday. We have the Georgia Line Dancers are coming to do a presentation, and it might be able to get you to kick up your heels a little bit and learn some line dancing. So, any questions?
I just appreciate y'all coming, and I know you and Roy and several others have been working tirelessly the past year, year and a half, on this thing, and that's what I wanted the commission to know. And also, the, the second reason I wanted to bring this up here is possibly let's think about funding them.
Any participation that you could, it would help.
Like we funded other things, you know, kind of help them fund it a little bit, because it's, it's a big deal, just like she said. It's two-hundredth year of Ware County, you know, and it's never gonna be two hundred years again. And it's gonna, the next one's gonna be a century away, and I don't think any of us are gonna be here for that one.
I know the last day, several months ago, we were talking about this. Scott, you were saying that we might not can just give them a donation for it, but we have another route that we can maybe take?
Well, I think at that time, and I was just thinking about that, and it may be, county attorney may have to pop in on this, but I think it may be a violation or state's gratuity clause. I don't know, I'll let her respond to that. I don't, I'm not sure of another avenue right offhand that we might be able to, she might, might know.
Is there any way of possibly being a direct pay to, like, the fireworks or whatever, instead of donating to the issue, but being a participant that way?
So I think what Mr. Moy is referencing is, in the Georgia Constitution, what we kind of commonly call the gratuities clause prevents you as government from taking taxpayer dollars and giving a gratuity to an individual or a private group. And so, you know, we can't go pave a personal driveway. We can't give a hundred thousand dollars even to a five oh one C three that we believe, you know, is a, doing excellent work if they're not one of our government services. And so I think, to the county manager's point, that's what he's referencing. You know, I, candidly, this is the first I've heard of this, and so I don't know that I have studied enough to understand, you know, if it is the commissioner's desire, are there ways that we could support it without, without a violation of the gratuities clause? We would have to study on that and see exactly. Are you all a five oh one C three, or, I mean, you, okay, for, just for this purpose, or?
Just for the event.
For the event, okay.
Yeah, and after that, it'll go into the historic, and the proceeds we have after that goes to the Historical Society.
We'll make a copy of that and give it back.
And then the Heritage Center.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Split between that and the Heritage Center. So it will go back into the community.
Okay. So I think, if we can, if y'all will allow staff to study on that a little bit, and maybe get some more information, and get some direction from you all also, and then we'll, but generally, you know, I think it is correct that we can't just give money even to a very worthy five oh one C three that, you know, but, but we will study on it and see.
And if you have, if you need me, any questions, I'm here, okay?
So right now, what, what, the funding right now, you all, I guess you got other organizations and stuff to support in your halls?
All of the fundraising we're doing, from T-shirts to the coins to the gala. So that's why we need everybody, the community's help, to get this word out, because all of that funding that we get from them, like the galas and the next event, goes toward that. Every bit of it.
And Madam Attorney, I guess there's nothing that will prevent us as individuals, private citizens, if Timmy wants to give you ten thousand dollars, he can do that.
Right, right.
You know?
That's correct.
He's got no deep pockets, you know? He needs to get rid of some of that money.
We actually, we actually had, the very first person that brought into the community was somebody who lived in Folkeston and donated a piece of land, and we sold it for the first ten thousand dollars that we got to start. So that has helped, but we gotta step up to the plate, 'cause can't have that.
And I thank you, I thank you and Mr. Roy and Steve and everybody that's helped on y'all's committee, 'cause I know I went down there, I go eat at Plant Cafe, they own Plant Cafe, and I go down there and eat quite often. But I know the work, especially Mr. Roy, me and him spoke several times, and he has worked tirelessly, just like I know you and Steve have, and me the other, and I just think it's a great thing.
We've got a good group of individuals, so.
Yes, I do, yes, I do. Definitely do. I just appreciate all y'all and what y'all have done. I'm just, I hope to be here to see this one, 'cause I know I won't be living for the next one.
You've got that right, me either. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Roy.
Thanks for the coin.
And thank you for the coins, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for the coin also.
Okay, got any commission to come in?
I don't. I don't, sir.
Get it. I hear motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So I go.
Meeting adjourned. All in favor?
I don't.
Come back in fifteen minutes, ten minutes? Four.
We'll say.
What time?
Five oh three. Five oh five. Five oh five, what time?
Four thirty, we're done past here.
Yeah, we're supposed to start.
Ten at five.
Yeah, we're running behind now.
Yeah. Ten at five, we'll start back on.